Okay. Yeah, all you have to do is nod.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so I need to sign by the name. It's a, it's an, um, addendum to our contracts to... Can you get it signed or does he need some explanation?
Can we do that? Why would you want an explanation? Um, this is an existing agreement, right?
Yeah, it's an existing. Wait, I don't know, so we have to correct it.
Oh, okay. So has this already been reviewed by everybody?
Yes.
You don't want to...
No, reviewed by everybody.
Well, like, the mayor or some commissioners have been reviewed permission or...
No. No, the first one, yes, this is an addenda, an extension.
You don't want to talk to him, that's okay.
Hey Pete, I haven't read it.
Yeah, I do want to start, yeah. Um, what's that? All right.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to chapter five-five-one, title five of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article Five, Section Twelve of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop and a regular meeting on Tuesday, June the seventh, 2011, at five fifteen PM and six PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at ten oh one East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop item A, discussion regarding the dual customs project by Brownsville International Air Cargo and city staff.
Mayor and city commissioners, our purposes are coming before you this evening to give you a briefing with regard to the status of something that we are pursuing. It is a binational, private-public partnership to create a dual customs facility here with the Brownsville South Patrón International Airport, which is your community airport, okay? In your packet that we, that the city secretary sent out to you last Friday, plus some information that BEAC has put on the table before you, you have a combination of things. First of all, you have a copy of the presentation by Dr. Diaz as well as Mr. Farias. You also have a copy of the much larger presentation scheduled to be done in Mexico City by both the Brownsville International Air Cargo folks as well as what has been put together by our consultants, okay? You also have a brief, a copy of this brief PowerPoint presentation. Let me just take a few minutes to go through with you. First of all, next slide please. The, so that you'll know, and we think it's important for you to know, the concept in terms of a dual customs facility is not new to Brownsville. This is a book, it's The Airport History of Brownsville. It was written by Carl Chilton, okay? Next page. The, the position of Brownsville with regard to air cargo is particularly unique. Keep in mind such things, the fact that we have a, a custo- a twenty-four-seven customs facility at the present time, operates around the clock, customs officials are there and so forth, and can hand not only inspect passengers, for example, but also inspect cargo, twenty-four-seven. There isn't any other airport in the valley, the closest one is probably Laredo, that has the same customs capability, okay? Do also keep in mind that the earth, the earth is not flat, okay? When you look at a plane flying, for example, flying cargo that is flying cargo from China, say, to St. Louis and then eventually bound to Brownsville, that cargo plane, the, the shortest route to fly that freight is actually over top of the North Pole as well as down to St. Louis, as well as down to Brownsville and points beyond, because that's the shortest route instead of going around the globe, okay? That's important to consider in terms of air cargo. The other thing that's important to consider, there are two major air cargo ports in the United States, the biggest ones there are. One is in Miami, one is in Los Angeles. The vast majority of the air cargo that is flown into the United States from Central America, South America, and Mexico is going to those big air cargo airports and then onto its destination, whether it's the Midwest, where the case may be. Typically is going, let's say that you're bringing cotton seed on an air cargo aircraft that is flying into North Texas, okay, in order to deliver the cotton seed to be planted in terms of cotton. Typically, and that cotton seed is grown in South America. Typically, that cotton seed would be flown to Miami, it will arrive there, and timing is important in terms of cotton seed, so that it doesn't end up germinating while it's on the plane. That plane will fly to Miami. Typically, right now, it has to sit on the ground for about two days in a queuing line waiting to be inspected, for customs to inspect it, and so on and so forth. Two days ground time, on the ground with that plane just sitting there waiting for inspection. Time is money in the air cargo business. So all this time, the costs are ticking up, okay? Let's say that clears customs, then it flies to its final destination in the US, which is an airport somewhere that can, is, has big enough runways and so forth to receive that. All of that time that it takes is money to the company that is, that has that plane, as well as to the people who are delivering the cotton seed. At the present time, the Brownsville Airport has sufficient capacity to have about five hundred planes per day. We are nowhere near having that many cargo planes flying through Brownsville. But we have the capacity to do it in terms of runways, taxiways, and lengths, as well as having a twenty-four-seven dual customs facility. When you look at this map, if you look at Canada, the United States, and the various countries in Mexico, you can see if you are going to fly from the point of South America, okay, some point towards Miami or towards Los Angeles to the Midwest, you're going out of your way to land and then coming back to, say, the Midwest. Let's say to an assembly plant in Ypsilanti, okay, or Detroit. Flying out and then flying back to a point is using fuel as well as the additional time and so forth. Brownsville, we believe, is ideally positioned, okay, in terms of where it is in the center of the country and in the middle point between several countries, North America and South America, to have a dual customs facility whereby, if you were flying freight right now, for example, and you're going to fly the freight to a point in Mexico, an assembly plant in Saltillo, okay, you would have to first fly that freight to one of the six customs inspection stations for airplanes that exist in Mexico. You go there, you clear customs, then you can complete your final leg of the flight to your final destination. That takes time. It's also additional ground time for the aircraft on the ground, okay? Another reason for having dual customs here has to do with the fact that if we are successful with your support in having a Mexican customs inspection station here, it creates that dual customs concept. And we are able to take that aircraft, land it here, have it inspected by Mexican customs here, and fly straight to the final destination in Mexico. We won't have to do that, you know, the air cargo company won't have to do that additional leg in Mexico. Next. This is basically what I've just mentioned to you in terms of discussing the concept for you. Next, please. We have continued to pursue this concept for quite some time, as, as Dr. Diaz will point out in his presentation. This is a letter that's in your packet from Alan Burson of US Customs and Border Protection. This is one of the key people in the United States, okay, who will make the final decision on which airports, which communities get a dual, a permanent dual customs facility. There are two test projects going on right now. One is in Nogales, Mexico, the other one is in Laredo. We want to be one of the final points where there is a dual customs facility, okay? This letter from Burson actually describes what needs to be done and basically describes what we are doing to pursue this concept. We hit, we, the city, have already developed a marketing study which we provided to Brownsville International Air Cargo, and that data is to use to support the efforts in Mexico to obtain the necessary permission. Next. Brownsville International Air Cargo, BEAC if you would, okay, is here representing themselves this evening. That's the private portion of the overall public-private partnership, binational partnership. They'll be making a presentation. Okay? We've very quickly gone through this, but wanted to make sure that, as I said, we're following up in terms of this concept. And now what I'd like to do is turn it over to Dr. Tony Diaz as well as Ricardo Farias to make their presentation with regard to the private sector development.
Honorable Mayor Martinez, our commissioners, city manager, Mr. Kabler, Mr. Saucy, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Antonio Diaz. I am vice president of Brownsville International Air Cargo, and my partner, Mr. Ricardo Farias, will speak after I do. And he is the president of the company, and he's been the brainchild and the dynamic force of our company. The objective of, of BEAC is to achieve a dream that we, we feel is and going to be realized in the near, very near future. It's a, bringing an exciting concept of bringing Mexico and the United States together, working together and bringing the sixty-two Mexican airports and the two-hundred-and-two airports in the United States through a pre-clearance facility. It's a, it's, it's going to improve, it's going to have cost savings, it's going to have reduced delays. And first of all, like Mr. Brown was saying, it's, it's a very simple concept. It, it, what it basically is going to do is going to have the, the Mexican customs here at the airport with the US customs under the same roof, working together, uh, and having the cargo commodities, et cetera, uh, pre-cleared in this air, in, in this area. This is going to make it easier and quicker for transport to be handled. The, this dual customs facility will greatly benefit the city airport and, and region by creating jobs, increasing the, the, the tax revenues, and incorporating the joint cooperation between the city existing, within the, the existing airport facility. We sit at the best strategic location. We have the port, we have the airport, we have the bridges, and we have the land transportation. The weather city has this available, and we need to take advantage of it. It's there for our, the journey began four years ago, going to different agencies, including the FAA in Fort Worth, the American Embassy, visiting multiple times, talking to Homeland Security people there, and the Mexican, and going to the Mexican customs area with the help of the city manager and the other administrative people. Um, the most important part of this was the letter that, that Mr. Brown presented, which is the letter that, that Alan Burson sent to us. And when we met with him face-to-face in McAllen, he looked at us and we explained to him the concept and what we were going to do. He said, "This is a no-brainer. You have our full cooperation, but you're going to have to bring us to the table, a sound operational business plan. You're going to have to work with Laredo, and you're going to have to have the government of Mexico bring them the, the information that they, that they want, and they're going to help us." And in, in that letter, she says, "Any ultimate selection of potential airports for any type of pre-clearance operations proposed by the authorities of Brownsville will depend on multiple factors, including the government of Mexico agrees to place its personnel and not a unilateral Homeland Security decision. For either project to move forward, it must have a sound operational commercial basis, and we, and we have the data to be able to back it up. The, this endeavor will be the economic engine for the area by bringing air cargo traffic, increasing the jobs, incorporating the assets of our largest trading partner of Texas, which is Mexico, the second trading partner of the United States, which is also Mexico. And it, it'll facilitate the, the movement of imports and exports between our nations and improve cooperation and security tenfold. It will incorporate ancillary services to build the education opportunities for our children in the field of aeronautics, engineering, international management, just to name a few. And more importantly, it will secure the future growth of our economy here and stop the brain drain that we've had for so many years. We will then be able to show the capacity and other commitments of that partner, the city government and the private sector, to foster job creation and business development. We encourage others in the community and to, to help us with this economic puzzle. We are inclusive in our endeavors and welcome the companies at the Brownsville International Airport to collectively assist in manifesting this opportunity. This project will be beneficial to all parties and, and encourage the city commission to, to open to others and provide the infrastructure and necessary to develop and sustain the economic growth of this area. In addition to having met with state and local government authorities and private sector, the data that you, that you have available that the, the city has, has offered and helped us accumulate will show it that this is, this is the time to do it. We need the invaluable assistance of Mayor Martinez, the city manager, the airport director and city commissioners to demonstrate to the ci- that the City of Brownsville supports and is committed to seal the deal. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at the goal line and are poised to successfully complete this project in positioning Brownsville, Texas to take advantage of economic growth and tax base to be derived from making the area an alternative major faci- air cargo facility like Los Angeles and Miami. We believe that over the last four years since we began our journey, the city has slowly begun to recognize the importance of international trade to the economic strength of our city. Currently, we are poised with a new local city administration, an administration that is committed to facilitate and maintain the economic growth and vibrancy of Brownsville. It is because of our collective vision between the city administration and local businesses people, along with the hard work and perseverance of local citizens, that we convert this opportunity into a reality of our city. I want to show you some statistics with the, as, as Miami is a model. Do we have that? Okay, uh, you don't have...
We have the data to be able to provide to you to demonstrate what we said earlier about Miami in particular. Dr. Diaz has generated some data that shows how many air cargo pounds, for example, go through Miami. And the data represents something you would never believe, how many air cargo operations go on at the airport in Miami. They have, they have about twenty-five thousand employees at the airport. Just an illustration, yeah?
The, the, the important part of, of that, of that, uh, uh, information that which, which will, will get to you, I'm sorry that it wasn't in your packet, or maybe, maybe it's not in my packet, okay? But essentially, what it boils down to is this. Their economic engine of the, of the airport in Miami is over twenty-six billion dollars a year. Number one. Creates over two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand jobs, and one out of every four jobs in the community is derived through the airport. So, if we can take five or ten percent of, of that, and, and in the list that you'll see, Mexico is way down the line as far as their trading partner. It's our neighbor, we need to take advantage of it. And I'd like to conclude by telling you all thank you by, for allowing me the opportunity to speak and inform, and more importantly, to, to look forward to, to working with you in, in this endeavor. It's, it's, it's really, a really cool concept. And, 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 and we feel confident, we know that it's going to happen. We just need a commitment from, from you all to say when you want to go to Mexico City. Thanks to my partner, Mr. Ricardo Farias, an international businessman who's had, who has a network in Mexico to be able to, has facilitated this, this, the, the information over there. And, and, Mr. Farias?
Thank you, doctor. And does Mr. Farias wish to speak or address us, or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners. My name is Ricardo Farias Nicolófonos. And, well, I just to endorse what Dr. Diaz says. We've been working four years. Long way to came to this point. We have invested substantial amount of money from our company in our partnerships, and we are ready to execute the first construction of the facilities at the airport to accommodate and to prove to Mexico that we have the conditions. We will have the facilities to establish the dual customs operation. This is going to be a huge project for the area. We will proceed also to promote the Mexico-US alliance in the Valley of Texas and in the Mexico-Tlalalipas to enforce bilateral trade. Because this is the reason, and this is the condition that Mexico is willing to come here, that we improve the Mexican economy as well. So, we hope this is commended to all of us and we have all the support. Also, it's going to benefit all the operators established in the airport and around the airport, foreworders, cargo operators, airline companies, anyone who established the airport and is going to come to the airport will be benefit. So this is basically all. And thank you very much for your attention.
Well, thank you for, thank you for your time. I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Mr. Farias?
Mr. Farias, I think Ricardo. Commissioner, Don Goria.
Yes, sir.
We've almost, we've almost been here for four years and a half. Since we first met, when we started, when we first met in Mexico. To this point, you say we're almost at ninety percent and ready. After the change of mandate in Mexico. What, how do we continue with our connections? What do you have there?
Absolutely. But it's not necessary, because already within this administration of President Calderón, the project is already approved. It's approved between the two nations. The first effort was to coordinate between the United States and Mexico at federal level. That's already coordinated, because Laredo has taken the priority, because we worked on it, but they took it. However, with the effort of the city of Brownsville, we went to see the commissioner Burson and the people interested in Mexico, and we agreed that Brownsville was the second option. And we already have it, now it's just a matter of execution. We already have the risk of a change in Mexico. Okay? To you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I have a couple of questions or clarifications for Mr. Brown, thank you.
Ah, okay. Thank you very much for...
Thank you, Mr. Farias.
I'd like to know in more detail what the city's monetary and capital contributions are to this facility project in general.
Thus far, we have spent, in two different consultant efforts, about thirty thousand dollars, okay, to put together, you know, data that supports this concept that is to be taken to Mexico for the Mexican government officials. And they've been communicating through Mr. Farias as to what they need to help, to guide them in terms of what Brownsville's capabilities are. Runway conditions, runway widths, capabilities, braking capacity, thirty thousand square foot air cargo building, how big's the foreign trade zone, what kind of market is there for cargo in this area, for example? All that's data, in fact, I believe you've got copies from Campbell Hill in your packet. That has already been done. The next step, okay, in terms of what is being discussed, the building that you see there is proposed to be built by Dr. Diaz as well as Mr. Farias, on land that is leased by the city at fair market value to Mr. Diaz, right beside the existing air cargo building. In addition to that, we, this Friday, working with the grants people, we are submitting an EDA grant application for funding to build another twenty thousand square foot adjacent to the air cargo building. That will be about, about approximately three million dollar building. It will be, again, on land that's right adjacent to the air cargo operation. We are going to make that building available to Dr. Diaz and BEAC for potential additional warehousing space. If for some reason they, they ran into a problem, actually, it's a backup. If they're in some sort of a problem whereby, you know, they didn't get the investors they need, whatever it is, we can still build this same concept, but use the other building we're applying to EDA for the money for. And we've discussed this with them today and so forth, and that's basically how it's going to work. That's our commitment to this thus far, other than, you know, our indication and willingness to work with them over a period of time to get this done.
Okay, so this four-point-two-million-dollar-plus facility will be funded completely by Mr. Farias?
And Dr. Diaz, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Workshop item B, discussion regarding projected economic impact and advisability of West Parkway tollway.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm Mark Lund. I have served as the MBO Director for seventeen years, and I've been asked to explain some of the things in terms of the technical analysis about the proposed toll road. of the things in terms of the technical analysis about the proposed toll road. Next image, please. Yeah, if you could go to the, just push here, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, this will be very briefly technical, I won't get too hung up, but the transportation planners use a travel demand model to help predict the future, when we look at future travel volumes. This is a... Can you help me with that? Okay, because I, that way I don't have to chew gum and talk at the same time. Next, next slide, sir. There we go, next slide. We'll go through this pretty quickly. All right, the travel demand model is a computer model. When you watch TV news, you know, they have a weather model. And it's, we have different zones, you can see, keep referring to the West Loop, that's what it was called before it became a West Parkway. Next image. Yeah, there are different zones where you, in 19, in 2004, the MPO staff were paid federal monies to do housing, employment, and income levels, all that in terms of different zones, population figures. So, we make a snapshot of where Brownsville was in the spring of '04, and then we look ahead to 20, 30, and to 20, 35. Next image. All right, there's the zones, you can see them. Next image. All right. Then imagine Brownsville, the development of that aspect of the city's comprehensive plan was under contract. Ambiotech was the lead consultant. And then, Kimberly Horn Associates had a copy of the MPO model because of other work they had done. So, they analyzed as part of that Imagine Brownsville, what would happen with the West Loop. Next image. And the colors there represent the volumes, you know, where it's red, that means congestion, orange is a little bit congested, yellow's pretty good, and then green is the best traffic flow. Next image. And they looked at the two versions of the West Loop. The toll road, they put it, yeah, right there, we'll stop there, is grade separated. And as we know, they only show it getting on over by the flea market, exiting over by Palm Boulevard, and then ramps at Morrison Road. Then the other version of this proposed road was at grade, a conventional road. And then, if you recall, the RMA, the county RMA, kept saying over and over, you have to have the toll road to deal with congestion. Well, look what the model tells us about this. It says that at the military highway with this proposed toll road, and I have to caution you that this is, they're assuming that it's free. We know a toll road's not free. So, you get into a whole nother calculation, how many people won't pay the toll. But assuming that it was free, the aggregate version of a road is two and a half times better than the, than the grade separated one. And then at Morrison Road, it's about the same. And, next image. All right. And modelers do have some ideas about how do you eliminate the people that won't pay the toll? And it's the value of the time. The more wealthy your community, the more people have the incentive to save time and pay the money to the toll. We had training, Alfonso Vallejo, who works at the MPO, and myself, we had TransCAD training in Far District. And I said, "Look, Tech Dot, help us." They had people from Tech Dot, Texas Transportation Institute, "Help us understand how to make a calculation about assumptions about who would pay toll and when." And they said, "This idea that the model that Tech Dot works with us on, that it's a, a toll road is free, that's absurd. What assumption do I use?" You know, I said, "I've been using assumptions like one out of eight might pay toll, one out of 10." And they said, "No, it might be one out of 20, maybe..." So, if you, if you go back to those figures we had, with the 10,000, if it was one out of 20, that's 500 cars a day, which we, our community would invest $170 million for 500 cars? It's a strange notion. But the modelers wouldn't tell me an exact answer, but these people have been doing this for decades. They say, you know, it could be that low. And if you think about it, if it's 50 cents a mile, which is what they've, when they've just opened up 550, that toll road, which the MPO helped the county get the federal money to do that, it's 50 cents a mile. So, it's nine mile toll road, that's 450. How many people really want to save six to 10 minutes and pay 450 to go nine miles? I mean, just common sense tells you it's not going to be very many people. So, there could be some people at Maquilas Plant, but I don't know if that's 40 people, 80 people that would pay the 450. I don't know. But, all right, next image. Reasonable assumptions, all right. The, to build improvements, over and over, the RMA said, "You don't have the money to build a conventional road." Well, yes, we don't have money from Tech Dot. Tech Dot's run out of money. But we've seen with the city, with Morrison Road on the west side of town, working with the private sector, that's going to be done. The B and M Bridge would like a road that would connect to 281, which their toll road does not. Perhaps there can be a connection. That's something, leave the door open, in essence, for a conventional road. Because if that were an option, then, you know, if you build two lanes for a half a mile, that's serving to lessen congestion, because people can get to it. All right. And a conventional roadway would be a third of the cost, more or less. And, next image. All right. This Parkway, the traffic counts that we saw were very minimal, so that doesn't do much for our economic development. And then when you restrict access, businesses don't want to be next to a big wall where there's no access. We don't see a lot of businesses that want to get up next to a barrier. They want to be, what is it? CBS paid a lot of money to be at the corner of Boca Chica and Central Boulevard, right across from the Walgreens. They know where the traffic counts are, they want to be where it's congested. So, anyway, that's, that's a basic analysis there. Next image, please. A conventional roadway, you'd have higher traffic counts that would promote economic development, leads to sales tax receipts, provision of access, as we just talked about, where there's access, that's where your property values increase. All right, next image. All right, this is from the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority. And then they give us three examples where you're going to have congestion. And they say at 802, at Boca Chica, at Central, and 3248. And they said, "What are you going to do with your congestion?" Well, guess what? The toll road doesn't connect to any of these three examples. So, the toll road really won't do anything to solve the congestion. And the other thing, that congestion is a bugaboo, there are lots of states in the Midwest who don't have Brownsville's congestion problems, who would like them. We are creating jobs, we, our population is growing, with that comes congestion. But congestion is also a sign of economic activity. 15 years ago, when I was with the MPO, our biggest number one problem was congestion in Boca Chica. And we have less congestion in Boca Chica, because businesses have relocated to the north side of Brownsville. And I hope that that trend abates, and that some of the congestion returns to Boca Chica, because it's not healthy. So, congestion is like a two-edged sword. There's inconvenience, but it also is a sign of economic vitality. So, if you look at this argument, it makes sense that these are places that could be congested, but the toll road's not really going to solve the problem. Next image, please. That's, I try to keep it short and sweet, and I would mention that I had conversations with Mr. Gonzalez, Pete Gonzalez, about, we were trying to look at examples of where the city has invested in roadways and what has been the job growth. And we were talking about, in 1999, the city spent $415,000 to do four tenths of a mile of East Morrison Road. And in that area, including not only the east, but the west side, all the way over to Home Depot, we've had, we get roughly each month about $2 million. Actually, it's about $1.8 million in sales tax. And then over the year, the 12 months, you get about, about a quarter million dollars, $250,000 in ad valorem. So, if you think of a conventional road going in where the rail comes out, I would think the most lucrative area would be over there by FM 3248 to the Morrison Road area. But I would just suggest that the toll road does not solve the congestion problems, and whether the rail corridor is used for a trail that gets you to Oliva Park, or whether it's used for a convent, conventional roadway, that's something, you should keep that option open. And the, if you have any questions, now's your chance, I'll try to address them.
Melissa?
Have you shared your analysis with the RMA, David Alex or Pete Sepulveda, and demonstrated to them that it somewhat conflicts with their numbers?
We'll share it with them. But right now, I've just been focused in conversations with Pete Gonzalez, and some months ago, the city attorney asked me to look into this. So, I've just been focused on presenting the most reliable information I can to you folks. The, you have to remember that this model has a certain scientist, scientific aspect, but some of it's a judgment call. You know, and that, that there's no, it's like a moving target with demographics and also with traffic. I wouldn't have predicted 15 years ago that Boca Chica would lose some of its traffic. You know, I knew Brownsville was growing to the north, but I didn't envision how explosive the growth would be on FM 3248. And so, but some of the information, when the RMA first started out, just what would it cost per mile, that wasn't available to us. So, that 50 cents a mile, common sense tells you that that gets pretty expensive to, for a nine mile ride. But yes, we will share it with them.
I would have liked to have seen them, their look on their face with your, with your data, since they've presented to us-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
They presented to us previously some conflicting information, and I would have liked to have seen them here to see what they had to say.
We, yeah, what we'll find out. The county's part of the MPO, and we have a meeting tomorrow, and we meet every second Wednesday of the month.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions?
I just want to thank you for coming before us, Mark, and letting us know this information. Do you have any other recommendations for, obviously, you're endorsing an at-grade road, if any road at all? Do you have any other thoughts about a different location for this type of road?
You know, the, there's, there's a couple of things I would add. The RMA does not own the right of way. The state of Texas owns the right of way. So, I can envision a scenario, let's say the MPO Policy Board votes to take this out as a toll road, and then this option about a conventional road, I think of that as just leaving the door open. You know, if, 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 we may even, the city may even ask RMA's help to use the corridor. I could, it doesn't necessarily, if the funding's available to build a sidewalk and a trail to Oliva Park from 802, therein, that's transportation, that there's, you would, you would figure if the RMA sees that the toll road is gone, that they would work with the city on that other, that trail project, so to speak. But, you know, it really, if you keep the door open for another possibility, there's no hurry in terms of transportation, that one end of the corridor would be developed quicker than the other. I would imagine it'd be easier in the Morrison Road area to develop something with the, since you already have a business group that wants to promote access, and a lot of the zoning's already, is, it's vacant land, so it's less, there's nobody there living there who's really going to object, that might be easier to do. You know, if you come back to West Brownsville, you know, 15 years from now and say, "Hey, are you, you, do you have an idea that you want a road, another road that gets to 281?" It's going to be, you know, I, I, all those scenarios, many different ways to develop it. But the, what I was asked to do was to look at what is the, the MPO's data indicate? And this information from Kimberly Horn, that they took our model, and then they, they looked at the two scenarios. That tells us a lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance?
That concludes our two work sessions, workshop sessions. Is that correct?
Want to wait until 6 o'clock for beginning pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, we got about, we have about three minutes?
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Enzo Troyani? MIA?
There he is.
Charities up?
Huh?
Are you in the charities up there?
He has a great ted.
Yeah, sure.
I'm wearing twenty-five bucks on.
Hey, Jessica. You wanna leave us in the pledge of allegiance? Are you feel, you feel good? That's your, okay? You can do that one, okay? And, and Greg, you'll do the Texas question, please?
We just usually just go.
Huh?
We just usually go.
This came in before the, uh-
Okay, but Jessica, you go first, then you go next.
It was after the first year, correct?
I won't call your name, just do, okay?
June sixth was this last one, or whatever.
Sure.
What are we gonna have?
Oh, no matter, probably. It's your birthday, you know?
No, I don't know. I have my-
Two weeks ago, okay, sorry.
Every, every, every two or three years, Rachel's gonna tell me. She's done about three times, she forgets.
All right, I think it's six o'clock. I'd like to call this, hello?
Yeah, hold on.
Do you have one? Not good at that. Uh, if we, everybody could take a seat, we'll go ahead and get, get the meeting started. Uh, if everybody would please stand. Jessica, go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Brad.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the city that you have blessed us to live in. We thank you for this great nation. Lord, I thank you for the leaders before us here tonight, both the new ones and the ones that have been here before. Lord, I ask you to anoint each of them, to listen closely, to hear what's being said and what's not being said. Help each one of them to see what's obvious and to see the things that are not obvious, to see the motives and the future that this city has. Lord, I ask you to have your way in this meeting tonight. Let it be good for the city of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Brett. Okay, um, I wanna thank everyone for being here today. Um, this is actually my initial meeting as, as mayor, other than being sworn in the last time. And the first, uh, agenda item is the mayor's report. Uh, and although I do not have a written report, I would like to make several comments with regards to the initiatives that I'm very, very much interested in. And as I told the electorate during the campaign, one of the first things that I want to get started, and there are several things that wanna get started all at the same time, is an ethics code. So I do want to let the, uh, the city attorney know that I would like for them to come back and give us some proposals with regards to the different types of ethic codes that are in existence in, in the cities or counties of the state of Texas, or at least submit them to the commissioners for their consideration. So at, at a later point in time, uh, within a short period of time, uh, we would like to have, uh, the ability to move forward on an agenda item. Um, and, and let me just kinda make it clear what it is the ethics code would be. Um, it is a way of being able to, uh, have the accountability and the transparency of your elected officials, which you are entitled to. Um, the second thing, in that, in that, in that vein, it allows all of you to know that if there is a vendor or if there is a, a vote to be taken, um, any, any financial considerations or, um, interests that anybody has that's an elected official would have to be divulged and made known. Uh, and consequently, from my prior experience on doing this sort of thing, would not be allowed to vote on that particular item, uh, but would have to make full disclosure as to, uh, the relationship. So that, that is something that I would like to have the, the public know, that I am very, very much interested in doing it. Um, the, um, the other second initiative that I think that we need to address, and I've talked to, um, Mr. Kabler, the, the city manager about this, and Jeff also, um, I think that we need to get a report out with regards to the brush and the debris and things that might be of harmful. Uh, should a hurricane, as we all know, the hurricane season is upon us. Um, so besides the city, I would ask that each and every one of you, uh, talk to your neighbors, and if you see debris and/or brush that needs to be picked up, um, you know, you might either alert us, or at the same time, if you have the capability of disposing of that without trying to, um, burden any, any further of the vehicles that we have, I would appreciate it. And all you property owners, uh, if you have properties that have been, um, have been destroyed or have the ability to have lying debris being hit with, um, some of the air that will be coming through here, uh, and the wind, uh, I would urge the, the entire city of Brownsville to please be mindful that that could be a safety hazard for other folks, and we certainly don't want any, any one of our citizens to get hurt. Um, the third thing that I'd like to address is that I think most of you are here for the workshop. Uh, and the airport, um, uh, that was given to us as far as the capability that we have out there, I would like a full discussion, uh, of this matter. As we go through here, I think one of the things that could really help the economy would be, uh, the airport. Um, for some of you who don't know, uh, and would like to know, the, that the subsidies, uh, Continental Airlines gets no subsidies from the city. They're standalone at this particular time and are doing well. Um, American Airlines likewise is now, uh, Mr. Brown, I think, have they now entered another contract with no subsidies?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, uh, the, the airport is doing great. Uh, and so I urge everyone in this community to fly Brownsville, uh, because, um, as so long as we are showing to the, to the public that we have the capabilities of having a lot of air traffic, um, passenger air traffic, I think we'll be able to, uh, attract other, other carriers and, and make it more accessible. And once you do that, everybody knows that transportation is a, is a great means of getting other businesses and economic opportunities to come through here, uh, as well as a cargo. Um, and the last thing, um, that I wanna make mention is, as you all will know, there are, um, there's still the runoff election that is, is still going on. Uh, so I want everybody, and urge everybody, to please exercise your right to vote. It is a privilege. Um, there are important elections, uh, having been gone through a campaign and, and realize how difficult it is sometimes to motivate people to go to vote. Um, I want to urge each and every one of you, uh, to do it. I'm not, you know, this, the, how you vote is your prerogative, but do exercise your right to vote. Um, that way, hopefully, together, um, we can do some very, very positive things with the commission regardless of who's on it, uh, because they're the people that you have elected and have decided that they're the best person for that particular job. So that will conclude my report at this time. Um, the next one is the commission's report, and I don't have any written reports. Um, and I don't know if any commissioners wish to make a report at this time?
Mayor, I just wish to, to alert the residents of District One around the Delta Court and Thirtieth Area. The construction did begin today, and they are resurfacing the streets. Uh, thank you to CDVG and, and for funding, Ben, and for Santana for having the crews out there. It is part of CDVG, right? It's not? Okay, we'll get back to you, Ben. But thank you, Santana, thank you for having the crews out there. And there are a lot more projects to come throughout the city. And I'm sure that, uh, as they, as they come along, uh, the commission will have, uh, their reports to give. Uh, Mayor, if you reminisce, just, uh, with the excitement of us getting sworn in at the last meeting, there were some people that I forgot to, to thank, and, which is most importantly, our directors and our employees. I'm so sorry that, you know, I got caught in the moment, but I forgot that, you know, the job that we do and the success that we encounter as, you know, as the elected officials is because of the hard work that you and your departments do. So thank you to all the directors, and thank you to the Brownsville Police Officers Association also for their support. And to everybody that, you know, helped out during the campaign, thank you so very much, and God bless each one of you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I would like to thank Parks and Rec for their, um, great idea of the mobile recreation unit that we saw in the paper and I believe went out to one neighborhood so far. Um, it's going to be going around our community throughout the summer, and we're hoping and have great plans to add to it, um, other options and features as the summer goes on. There's also going to be a new, um, TV show on the City Channel called Brownsville Salud, and I'd like to cha- thank the, uh, folks at the TV studio for entering in this endeavor with us. We have, would also like to thank Dr. Zelma Mata and her team of professors at, uh, at the Kinesiology Department at UTB. And there will be a series of wellness, or rather, activity seminars that will be starting this evening, I believe. Um, topics such as basketball drills and jogging trips, how to buy sneakers, uh, yoga, exercise bands, nutrition, all sorts of things that are related to, to wellness. So they are donating their time and expertise, um, for all of us, and we will be building on that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? All right, uh, number three.
Number three's presentation, Employee of the Month.
Mayor, members of the commission, please help me welcome the Employee of the Month for June, Ivan Reyes. Ivan has been an employee of the city of Brownsville since two thousand and two. Uh, he is in his tenth year of employment. In two thousand and six, he was, uh, assigned to be the, uh, benefit specialist. Uh, in August, he was appointed a position of Safety and Risk, uh, Specialist for the city of Brownsville. He, he has an awesome responsibility, handles it very well, and that is to assure that we have open enrollment for our employees, assure that they have their health benefits and, and health insurance policies in, in line. He, he's a point of contact with the Texas Municipal League and, and for the city health insurance matters. Uh, and our employees rely heavily on him when they come to see him in, in relation to any health issue they may have with themselves, with their family, and assure the paperwork and, and all, is all processed and things like that. Uh, he, he also oversees, uh, our workers' compensation claims and ensures that all deadlines are followed and things like that. Very, a huge responsibility that he is, that he has done very well for us o- over the years. Doesn't seem like it's been ten years, he still seems very young. Uh, but, uh, we all, uh, know where to find him because he's, does spend a lot of time in the office doing all this paperwork for us. And so we wanted to honor him for his Employee of the Month for this, uh, June seventh, two thousand and eleven. And of course, he is eligible for the Employee of the Year at our banquet in, in December. So Ivan receives our little plaque. Uh, Employee of the Month, City Brownsville, uh, awarde Ivan Reyes, uh, of the Human Resources Department for the month of June two thousand and eight, recognition of the outstanding services provided to residents of our city. Thank you. He gets the employee pin and, uh, the tradition, the traditional watch that we give out to our employees.
Congratulations.
And he asked, he gets to speak to the commissioners.
Oh, okay.
I just wanna say that it's, uh, it's been an honor to serve in the city of Brownsville, and, um, I'm gonna try my best to continue to keep up to this recognition that I've received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda are the consent agenda items.
Items A through H.
Right. Move your proof.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passes. Okay.
Item five.
Public hearing and action to adopt Resolution Number twenty-eleven dash oh-three-six to authorize the filing of a grant application and execution of grant agreements with the Federal Transit Administration for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, urbanized area formula grant program, program funds. Norma?
Okay, um, good afternoon, Honorable Members of City Commissioners. During this presentation, I will briefly discuss the Section Fifty-three oh seven grant program and the city's allocation for fiscal year two thousand and eleven. The reason for making this presentation to you nine months into the twenty, into the fiscal year two thousand and eleven is that we just received, uh, the funding from FTA. It was just released, um, last month. Um, we had been under continuing appropriations, resolutions from the government, and the Full Year Continuing Appropriations Act, uh, for two thousand and eleven was finally signed by the President, uh, in April fifteenth of two thousand and eleven. Um, then I'm gonna be going over the proposed capital planning and operating projects and the local match required for each. And after the presentation, you may open the public hearing to receive any comments or, uh, and take action on this item. The grant application is an early requirement for the city to access its share of federal grant funds for capital planning and operating assistance. This is not a competitive grant. The funds are allocated to transit systems by Congress on an annual basis. The allocations are then published in the Federal Register. The federal funds for all cities with a population of two hundred thousand are appointed to the governor of each state who has the authority to reallocate the funds at their discretion. In Texas, the governor has authorized Techstat to distribute or redistribute the federal funds. This year, the city's federal allocation was two million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six. However, because of the, of other urbanized areas in the state declining portions of their federal allocation, Techto- Techstat redistributed those funds on a pro-rata basis. Um, therefore, the city's, uh, total contribution for fiscal year two thousand and eleven was three million, nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven, approximately eleven thousand higher than the, what was published in the Federal Register. Activities for this grant include capital planning and operating expense. Each type of expense requires a non-federal match. Most capital projects require a twenty percent non-federal match. In other words, every four dollars in federal funds is matched by one dollar in non-federal funds. Our proposal includes two capital projects. Technically, these two capital projects, preventive maintenance and ADA paratransit operations, are operating expenses. However, we are proposing to take advantage of the federal rule that allows these expenses to be charged to the grant as capital projects at an eighty-twenty federal-local match ratio. Uh, preventive maintenance, um, includes all activities that, um, supplies, materials, labor, services, and associated costs required to preserve or extend the functionality and serviceability of the asset in a cost-effective manner, up to and including the current state of the art for maintaining such assets. For the ADA paratransit operations, we're allowed to use up to ten percent of our apportionment on the capital, at the capital eighty-twenty federal-local match ratio to pay for ADA paratransit services, which is a curb-to-curb service that is provided to eligible individuals with disabilities. Funding has been allocated for planning. Like capital projects, a twenty percent non-federal match is required for planning projects. We have allocated a total of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty for planning activities, which include analysis of service operations, Fairbox policies, system route modification, short-range and long-range plan updates, and participation in the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Finally, the proposal includes operating assistance. Operating assistance requires a fifty percent non-federal match of the net project costs. We are proposing to allocate one million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars in federal funds, which will be matched by the same amount. These funds can be carried o- over for up to three years. Five hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven in non-federal match will be contributed by Techstat. This tape, the next slide. This table shows a breakdown by funding categories and contributions. The city's contribution for capital projects will be two hundred and seventy-four thousand, twenty-one dollars, which will be matched by one million- $1,96,080 in federal funds. The city's contribution for planning projects will be $3,750, which will be matched by $15,000 in federal funds. And the city's contribution for operating expenses will be $1,377,960. Techstat will contribute $520,947 and the federal contribution will be $1,898,907. So, the total commitment from the city for this grant is $1,655,731 for a total federal contribution of $3,9,987 for a grant application of 5.1 million. One of the, one of the requirements for submitting this grant application is to hold a public hearing. The purpose for the public hearing is to obtain the views of the citizens on the proposed program of projects and the performance of us. A public hearing notice that included the proposed budget with brief descriptions of the proposed program of projects was published in the legal notices portion of the Classified As section of the Brownsville Herald on Sunday, May 22, 2011. It should be noted that the funding amount at publishing the Brownsville Herald was slightly different. We did, we did not receive the reallocation amount, including the pro-rata share from Techstat, until the day after the notice had been published in the newspaper. No project activities were deleted or added as a result of the new amount. The only change that occurred was that an additional amount of funding was added to the ADA paratransit line item. Now, this concludes my presentation. At this time, we'll open it for public hearing to receive any comments or any questions and I'll be happy to answer any of them.
I'm sorry, Robert.
I do have some questions. Norma, is this increasing our allocations from last year? Because the city has been putting from the general fund into this. Has it increased or decreased?
The federal allocation? Yes, it did increase.
It increased. You did have another grant for the bus system, I think it was last year, in which you got, I don't know, it was a million dollars to build shelters. Is that correct?
Yes, we got, we received two grants already for bus shelters and we're in the process of, in the process of being awarded the third grant for shelters as well.
Okay, my question for that is, has, you already started building shelters? Because you said you were going to be building on the east side of Brownsville, which is south.
Right. We have not started, we've started with the environmental assessments and requirements from Techstat and we have just basically got authorization, approval of our, of our submittal on that and we're currently working on the design plans for the, for the shelters.
Okay. When I looked at that 80/20, in which you said, we can get that money from this grant, but it still increased our overall contribution by the city, correct? Even though you had an 80/20, you said this will help us. You can borrow that money and use it to that extent. You had it up there right now. But you still told me it's still increasing the amount that the city has to put into this.
Well, we, we received more money, so therefore, because we received more money, it also increases the city's local contribution for that, for the amount that we, that it increased.
Okay. My good question is, will we save some money from here to be used for next year?
Whatever's not used, we have up to three years to utilize that money and it rolls over to the next year.
Okay. And one more. Are the operating costs the one that made your headache, correct?
Right. I mean, let me.
It is a headache. It is a headache. The question is there, with the new buses, would that decrease the use of some of this money to be allocated for other, for the ADA?
Well, I mean, we've got, we've got newer buses, so for the, for the beginning years of the buses, the maintenance costs are less and some of those are under warranty and we utilize those dollars how we best see fit for the operation.
So, we are going to save a little bit of money because we still got, because they're brand-new buses, correct?
Right. We received six brand-new buses in January.
So, those buses have free maintenance for one year?
We've got a five-year warranty on those buses.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Robert, Robert, very, and I thank you for all your questions. But for the future reference, would, if anybody's got some discussion to do, please go to the podium so that everybody can hear. Okay? Not a problem.
My question was not loud enough.
No, your voice is always louder than that. The question I'd have for City Attorney is that because of the variance in the, in the amount that was published in the newspaper, does that pose any, any legal problems? Because I think you said the amount would be, you're going to receive more, which doesn't, which doesn't seem like it should be a problem. If you were to receive less, that perhaps would create a problem. But Mr. Sossis, okay. So, with that, with that opinion then, this is a, an action item?
Move to approve.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Somebody gave me Robert Rule's award. All right, so we close the public hearing and now we'll entertain motions for action.
We'll have to vote.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Norma.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item six, public comment period.
Estella, how, I don't, they gave me the, the list, but I didn't have it in order.
Okay. Item number seven, consideration in action on Resolution Number 2011-040 to authorize the exchange of land for future use by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mayor Commissioners, I have an opportunity to discuss something with you. It just may look like a simple agenda item that we have, but this is much more than that. I'll have Mr. Gonzalez from the Planning Department speak here in a few seconds. But first of all, we have a treasure in an urban setting. There's a location in our city that's been here since the, forever, but in the 1880s it was developed. And we're going to kind of briefly discuss what we're trying to do here in this exchange. The one, number one thing, the reason why I think it's important for the Parks Department that we jumped on this is there's a last stand of Montezuma cypress trees. There's over 40 trees. It's one of the only stands around from Central America, all the way up, the only one in the United States. It's a major, major deal and it's in our, it's right under our noses, in our backyards, in La Posada. I can't even begin to tell you how the ecotourism will boost once we do this. But my main thing, I want to congratulate Mr. William Falk for going and moving with this. He jumped all over this, the family. They jumped all over this and it's for our community and it's so important to us. But before I head on, I would like to introduce Ramiro Gonzalez from the Planning Department, who has a short presentation for you.
Good evening, Commissioners. About six months back, Chris approached me about looking at this area and he took me out there and as anybody you take out there, they're just, you know, the space speaks for itself. This is a very visual presentation, but a little history about the property. Celestine Jagu purchased this 1880s. He, he was actually one of the first to install irrigation in the area. And some books, some historians say that he was actually the first person to plant a citrus tree in the valley, which is, I mean, tremendous history. Little, you'll show some pictures. Every part of this, this area is developed, as you can see. Here is our, our subject, little trail. There's development everywhere. This is Southmost Road. Bostedo's down here and this is La Posada Road. So, there's development everywhere. We're actually very lucky that, oh, we're actually very lucky that, that this still exists. So, next slide. This is the subject property. This is, this basically, the swap would provide access to this area. Currently, we don't have access. Mr. Falk has given us, you know, the permission to go and visit and everything else, but we do not have access. Next slide. This is what it looks like as, as you enter the, the.